Okay, good evening, everybody. Before we begin, I would like to ask everybody if we could have a quick moment of silence for the passing of former Mayor George Chamit. Thank you. I'm sure many of us will have things to say about him later in this meeting. Okay, please call the roll.
Mayor Delacollas.
Here.
Director Vla Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Crannick.
President.
Councilman-at-large Trevis.
Here.
Board one Councilman Biassiata.
Here.
Board two Councilman Frandorf.
Here.
Board three Councilman Kukrow.
Here.
Board four Councilman Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties Division.
Here.
Building Commissioner Morrow.
Okay, there are no meeting minutes, however, those minutes will, the first round for a while will be presented at our next meeting in a few weeks. Let's begin with the consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. President. Councilman Kukrow.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda this evening.
Thank you. Is anybody going to second that?
I'll second it, Mr. Jim.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to waive the 24-hour delivery requirement for the following three ordinances. Ordinance number 10, 2017, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $184,530 to serve as the authorized representative of the city and supervise the execution of the 2017 city road program and declaring an emergency. And ordinance number 11, 2017, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $17,390 for services provided for the NPDES stormwater program 2017 and declaring an emergency. And ordinance number 12, 2017, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter in a memorandum of understanding with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for the purpose of providing for the implementation of minimal control measures, illicit discharge detection, and elimination programming and pollution prevention for municipal operations, Phase II stormwater services, commencing January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2018, and declaring an emergency. And to amend the agenda by entering ordinance number 10, 2017, and ordinance number 11, 2017, and ordinance number 12, 2017, onto the agenda as items number 9G1, 9G2, and 9G3 respectively, as emergency measures if there is no division of the question.
Now, I'll second that. Please call the roll.
Mr. President, if I may.
Mayor Delacollas.
Comment, thank you. Two things, I think I just heard in all emergencies, or is this an emergency to amend the agenda?
This is to amend the agenda.
Thank you. I just, as I indicated in the caucus, I did not participate to this point and will not be participating in any of the discussions, deliberations, consideration, execution of any warrants or other documentation concerning ordinance 10, 2017, through an entity that I control, in part, I have a financial stake in real estate located on Orchard View Drive. So pending, I understand the law director will be seeking an opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission in that regard. I will be recusing myself from any participation whatsoever in ordinance 10, 2017, either till Orchard View is removed, or the law director obtains an opinion from the Ethics Commission that says otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to mention that regarding ordinance number 10, 2017, I'm also recusing myself for the time being until the law director gets opinion from the Ohio Ethics Commission. Any further comment?
I too will be with some reluctance recusing myself because I happen to live on one of the streets, never mind, there are another 60 homes there, but I was then advised I need to recuse myself, so I will do that.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything further? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Recuse.
Recuse.
Miss vote. Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
And Bicker.
Yes.
Okay, the agenda has been amended. Now we'll begin with the consent agenda dated January 23rd, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frandorf.
If there's no division of the question, I move that we accept the consent agenda dated January 23rd, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Consent agenda dated January 23rd, 2017 has been passed. Are there any resolutions of commendation?
There are none.
Okay, reports of committees, the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on January 16th. Those meeting minutes are filed with the clerk, and the next meeting will be held on February 21st. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, our next meeting is February 6th.
Thank you, Councilman. Community Services Committee, Councilman Bicker.
Yes, President, we met on the 3rd, and the minutes are on file with the clerk. Our next meeting is February 6th.
Thank you, Councilman. Police and Safety, Councilman Crannick.
Yes, Mr. President, we had our last meeting, the minutes are on file with the secretary, and our next meeting will be held on February 13th.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had two meetings in the last month. We had one on February 16th, which I was not attended at because I was ill, and then we had a special meeting on January 18th, and that video is available on YouTube to watch under Seven Hills City Council. Our next meeting will be on February 21st.
Thank you, Councilman. Rules, ordinances, and ethics, Councilman Biassiata.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our last meeting was January 3rd, meeting minutes are already on file with the council clerk. Our next meeting will be February 6th.
Thank you. Finance, Civil Service, and Personnel, Councilman Frandorf.
Yes, I'd just like to say regarding Councilman Kukrow's committee meeting, Tony Biassiata and I were able to conduct it, and Jim, I've got the minutes, and I will forward them to you. Regarding the Finance Committee, we last met on February, I'm sorry, on January 17th. There was also a special preliminary budget hearing on Saturday, the 23rd. Those minutes are forthcoming to the council clerk.
Thank you, Councilman.
Our next meeting is February 6th.
Thank you. Okay, are there any appointments and confirmations this evening?
No, thank you, Mr. President, yes, there is. At this time, I would like to nominate the appointment of Aaron Lobus to fill the existing empty five-year term on Planning Commission and request the consent of council to appoint him to that slot.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any motion?
I would like to make a motion to appoint Aaron Lobus to a five-year term on a Planning Commission.
I second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? I'd like to mention that Aaron Lobus is currently on the Planning Commission, and he's been instrumental in working on the Rockside Road development. I had a lot of terrific input and advice regarding the planned unit developments legislation, and he's been a great asset to that committee. Any further conversation? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Okay, Aaron Lobus has been reappointed to the Planning Commission. Communications, petitions, and claims.
I have a letter here that I'd like to read into the record from Guy Estrogal. He lives on Darkmouth Avenue in Cleveland. It stated January 18th address to the mayor with copies to all of council, the law director, and the police chief. Dear Mayor Delacollas, as a property owner in the city of Seven Hills, I am absolutely disgusted with the police department. After making a report for criminal damage and theft occurring at a house I own, nobody will return my calls from the police department. I filed a police report in the beginning of September 2016 for criminal damage and theft with the Seven Hills Police and was told by the sergeant that it would be followed up by a detective within a week or so. A sergeant from the Detective Bureau called and left me a voicemail message. I called him back within an hour and left a message with the information he requested and asked him to call me back. I never heard from him again. I made at least three more calls over the next two weeks to this sergeant that were never returned. The next time I called, I explained to the secretary who answers phones for the police why I was calling. She said the case was given to Detective Wamser. I left a voicemail message for him to call me and never heard from him. I called several more times in October and was told each time he was, quote, "very busy", end quote, by the secretary, and that she would leave him a message on his desk that I called. Again, I never heard from him. I also called and left messages for him on November 3rd, 18th, December 9th, and December 15th. In between those times, I would call and speak to the secretary, hoping to catch the detective at his desk. He was never there. I have called the police department so many times, the secretary knows who I am by the phone number, that appears on her caller ID before she even picks up the phone. The secretary is also always very nice and as helpful as she can be. After being fed up with no response from Detective Wamser, I called the police chief's office on December 27th. He wasn't there, but I left a message on his voicemail explaining what has been happening and asking him to call me. I never heard back from the chief. On January 5th, 2017, I called again to speak to the chief and was told by the secretary, the chief said my problem was to be handled by the sergeant in charge. Sergeant was not available, but was left a message to call me by the secretary I spoke to at the time. Again, I never heard from him. On January 9th, I called back to speak to the chief, and the secretary told me she would put me through to the on-duty sergeant, but he was out patrolling, so I had to leave a message in his voicemail. She said she would page him and let him know I called and that he would be calling me back. I left a message with all the particulars, and a few hours later, he did return the call. This happened to be the same officer, sergeant, that took the initial report back in the beginning of September. I asked sergeant, what was happening with my case, and he told me he gave the detective all the information to follow it up back in September. I asked why the detective would not call me back. The sergeant said, quote, "he was probably busy", end quote. I find it difficult to believe this detective has been busy for over four straight months and could not make a 30-second phone call. Sergeant told me that if the individual accused of damaging my property and stealing were to deny they did it, there would be nothing they could do, and it would be a civil matter. I asked if Detective Wamser ever contacted the named party, and he said he didn't know. I know he didn't contact the accused party because my attorney would have received a call from that individual's attorney if the police would have contacted her. I asked the sergeant how I could find out if Detective Wamser ever investigated the case. He told me he would give him a message to call me. Again, I have not heard from the detective. Mayor Delacollas, please explain to me what I am paying taxes for in Seven Hills. Why can't I get anybody to call me back after at least 20 phone calls and messages left with the police over a period of four and a half months? Please explain why I was told this is a civil case when the detective never even contacted the party named in the incident? It doesn't seem like anybody cares. It doesn't seem like anybody wants to do the job they are paid to do. What do I need to do to get this case investigated by the Seven Hills Police Department? If and when this case has been investigated, I would like a copy of the detailed report giving the specifics of the investigation. I want to know when the named suspect was contacted and what they said. Sincerely, Guy G. Estrogal. And that's all we have.
Thank you. Okay, council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding any items on our agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address, or anybody this evening. Okay. Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 3, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council suspend rules under the charter and reads ordinance 3, 217 by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 3, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frandorf, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Westland Heating and Air Conditioning of Westlake, Ohio, for the purpose of replacing and installing new replacement American Standard HVAC rooftop units with appurtenances at the city's Seven Hills Community Recreation Center in an amount not to exceed $13,975 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 3, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there any motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Petro.
I move that council passes ordinance 3, 2017.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 3, 2017, has been passed. Ordinance number 4, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Crannick.
I move that we suspend the rules under charter and read ordinance number 4, 2017 by title only for its first and final reading.
I second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 4, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frandorf, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio with TAC Computer Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, to provide annual RMS and hardware support, MDT services, and housing for the police department computers for a period covering January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, in an amount not to exceed $7,500 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 4, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there any motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Crannick.
I move that we pass ordinance number 4, 2017.
I second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 4, 2017, has been passed. Moving on to ordinance number 5, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frandorf.
I remove, excuse me, I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 5, 2017, by its first and final reading, declaring an emergency.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 5, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frandorf, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $10,713 for the purpose of serving as the authorized representative of the city to supervise the execution of the 2017 Streets Crack Sealing Program and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 5, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there any motion? I'd like to. Is there a motion?
I move that we pass ordinance number 5, 2017.
I'll second a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Councilman Frandorf.
I just wanted to state for everyone that this is the $100,000 crack sealing program that the city is embarking on for 2017. This $10,713 comes out of that $100,000, so it'll effectively be $89,000 and some change for our crack sealing program, which is going to go a long way in preserving our streets, and it's long overdue.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 5, 2017, has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 6, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we amend ordinance number 6, 2017, by adding emergency to it.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amendment ordinance number 6, 2017, has been amended. Is there any further motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I would like to move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance number 6, 2017, for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency.
Councilman Crannick.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 6, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frandorf, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Pinnacle Fitness Services of Ravenna, Ohio, for the purpose of purchasing two Green Series EL 7,000 elliptical trainers with appurtenances for use in the city's Seven Hills Community Recreation Complex and appropriating the sum not to exceed $6,290 for said purchase and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 6, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there any motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 6, 2017.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amendment ordinance number 6, 2017, has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 7, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and amend ordinance number 7-2017 by adding an emergency.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 7, 2017, has been amended to add the emergency clause. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance number 7-2017 by title only for its first and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frandorf.
Yes.
Crannick.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 7, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frandorf, Bicker, Crannick, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Pinnacle Fitness Services of Ravenna, Ohio, for the purpose of purchasing one CM325 Pro Maxima multi-functional freedom trainer with appurtenances for use in the city's Seven Hills Community Recreation Complex, appropriating the sum not to exceed $4,145 for said purchase and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 7, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there any motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 7-2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Recreation Complex, appropriating the sum not to exceed $4,145 for said purchase and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number seven, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biaseata.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number seven dash 2017. I'll second that. Is there any discussion?
Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number eight, 2017, has been amended to add the emergency clause. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance eight dash 2017 by title only for its first time and declaring an emergency.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Barth or bars? Sorry. He's thinking about it. Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number eight, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Schindler Elevator Corporation of Cleveland, Ohio, through the purpose of maintaining the elevator equipment and appurtenances at the Community Recreation Complex commencing January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, in an amount not to exceed $3,385.38 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number eight, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we pass amended ordinance eight dash 2017.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number eight, 2017, has been amended to add the emergency clause. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read amended ordinance eight dash 2017 by title only for its first time and declaring an emergency.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number eight, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $184,530 to serve as the authorized representative of the city and supervise the execution of the 2017 City Road Program and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number ten, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we pass amended ordinance eight dash 2017.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number nine, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Cleveland Communications Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for a one-year service agreement commencing January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017, for the purpose of enabling the Service Department to participate in the Parma Service Trunking Radio System and appropriating the sum not to exceed $2,100, $175 per month for said service and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number nine, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number nine, 2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended ordinance number nine, 2017, has been passed. We will now have the second reading of amended resolution. All right, then, we're going to go to the amended part of the agenda prior to the resolution. So, ordinance number 10, 2017. I don't know if we assign those. Jim, why don't you...
Was it me?
Yeah.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 10, 2017, by title only for its first and final reading.
10 is going for first reading. 11 and 12 are going for emergency.
My apologies. So, I make a motion that we read ordinance number 10, 2017.
Law Director Pignatello.
Matt, you just tell Carol to read ordinance 10 by 10.
All right.
You can leave it on because we're going to pass it on emergency. The second. Yeah.
First reading or emergency?
For first or second reading.
That's how you want to do it? Okay. And I can do this?
Yeah.
Okay. We're just going to read ordinance number 10, 2017, for its first reading.
Okay. Ordinance number 10, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traefus. Are you recusing?
Yes.
Okay, this will be introduced then by Councilman Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, correct?
Yes.
And ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $184,530 to serve as the authorized representative of the city and supervise the execution of the 2017 City Road Program and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 10, 2017, has been read for its first reading. Now, we will move on to ordinance number 11, 2017. Councilman Kukral.
You want me to do all three of these?
Yeah.
I move that we... And what are we doing? We're reading and... I'm sorry, I missed that one. Okay, Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 11, 2017, for its first and final reading.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 11, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Richard L. Bowen and Associates Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $17,390 for services provided for the MPDES Stormwater Program 2017 and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 11, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we pass ordinance number 11, 2017.
And I will second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 12, 2017, introduced by Councilman Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Cogge County Board of Health for the purpose of providing for the implementation of minimum control measures, illicit discharge detection and elimination programming, and pollution prevention for municipal operations, Phase II Stormwater Services, commencing January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2018, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 12, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we pass under ordinance number 12, 2017.
And I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Traefus?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes. Ordinance number 12, 2017, has passed. We will now have the second reading of amended resolution number one, 2017.
Amended resolution number one, 2017, introduced by Councilperson Traefus, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, a resolution authorizing the city to accept the findings of the Ohio Ethics Commission Inquiry Number 15-Q-0925-044 dated November 15th, 2016 in the matter of former Councilwoman Carol Lechner, and furthermore authorizing the city to accept the resolution of the Ohio Ethics Commission and payment of $2,112.50 in restitution to the city paid by former Councilwoman Carol Lechner for her participation in increasing the salary, indoor salary range, of Seven Hills Fire Prevention Officer Joe Lechner, husband of former Councilwoman Carol Lechner.
Amended resolution number one, 2017, has been read for its second reading. Okay, council will now be open to the audience. If anybody in the audience has any comments regarding anything at all, please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Tom Juris, 224 Crescent Ridge Drive. I was really amused by the recusal episode there. Councilman Frondor, I understand your reluctant recusal because I've been doing that for months as a member of the Planning Commission over a bogus allegation by a developer, but law department told me I should recuse myself, so that's what I did. Sure didn't like it. The deal with Lesnar. I actually called the Ethics Commission, spoke with a person there because I wanted to get some clarification on exactly what had happened in this process. I talked to investigative attorney Julie Cordy, I think it was, great young lady. The impression I came away with after that conversation was that what she did could have been punished as a fourth-degree felony that carries a six-to-18-month jail term and a $5,000 penalty. And neither of those were imposed because Councilwoman Lesnar is no longer in office. Now, she's no longer in office because voters unknowingly did her a favor by not returning her to office. Good for Councilman Lesnar and the Ethics Commission. Now, council wants to forgive the additional $200 or so dollars that the Ethics Commission should have found is due to Seven Hill residents. The calculation of the Ethics Commission was wrong. Apparently, they didn't have all the information or realize it was a retroactive situation or something, so Councilman Frondor pointed out $200-some dollars is still owed. Lesnar knows the money should be paid. We all know the money should be paid. The rationalization that we're hearing from council is that the cost of collection could exceed the amount of money being collected. We can all agree that this council has been very diligent in reducing the cost to government in Seven Hills. Unmistakable. Cutting last year's budget, which was supposed to be uncuttable, by $400,000 was a great accomplishment. Many of us hope to see the cutting continue. However, the idea that a lack of honesty and integrity in public servants is to be rewarded at taxpayer expense by forgiving a debt owed to the city is unacceptable. The amount of money due to the city is relatively insignificant. Some people might argue $220 or whatever dollars is a big whoop, but it isn't in the grand scheme of things. The violation of the public trust is extremely significant. $200, nothing. It is also significant that Lesnar's violation of the public trust would have been avoided if other public officials had not, in my opinion, been complicit in the deed. Then-Councilman Mike Barth, Jeff Bryda, and Tom Snitzke voted in support of Lesnar's unethical action. Mayor Delacqua signed into law the ordinance that made Lesnar's restitution payment necessary. Complicity is defined as an involvement with others in an illegal activity or wrongdoing. Law Director Pignatello, before any voting occurred, admonished all parties involved that an ethics violation would occur. It was going to happen. I have long been a proponent of accountability for public servants, real accountability with tangible consequences for those who would violate the public trust. I specifically asked the 2013 Charter Review Committee to consider, in addition to the charter, requiring same. That auspicious committee's sole work product was the elimination of the recreation board. Council President Barth and Mr. Bryda, two of the people that cast votes for the raise that were unethical, were part of that committee. They were both complicit in illegally convening and attending the third meeting of that group, which was held without prior public notice recorded by law. Mayor Delacqua ignored charter specifications when appointing Mike Barth and then Planning Commission Chairman Ed Foley to that review committee. So, it seems like we routinely ignore the charter and its specifications and the oaths you take when you get into office. This has been going on since 2013. Been watching this stuff and wanted to pull my hair out, but it's thin enough already. I was joined by Councilman Frondor before he became a councilman and watching this circus, disgusting circus. The moral of this tedious story is that Seven Hills has a long history involving so-called public servants who have, in my opinion, served themselves with impunity and above all else. Upon their exit from government, they are given commendations for their service by their successors. You guys, do anything you want when you're going out. Thank you so much for your service. This council has been seeking resident input as to improvements that could be made in our city. I would suggest that council look to the 2016 presidential race results for Seven Hills. The Drain the Swamp platform crushed the competition in Seven Hills. One of the wards, maybe Ward Three, was 60 to 40, 60 to 32 or something, ridiculous margin. Seven Hills residents started their swamp draining in 2015. That's why a lot of you are sitting there now. This council would do well to take any and all actions possible to show residents that it shares the obvious resident desire for accountable public servants. That's what Drain the Swamp's all about, guys. In this particular case, collect all the money due to the city and collect it from all lawbreakers, collect on a basis of principle and legality despite the economics involved. Collect from everyone, even former council members. They owe what they don't owe. Get the money. If Lesnar gets a $200 discount on her indebtedness, I think it'd be fair to extend that same discount to all taxpayers. I think it'd be fair to extend that same discount to all taxpayers. Everyone should benefit from council's lax attitude, if you want to call it that, lax, benevolent, whatever, attitude towards money owed to taxpayers. Everyone should benefit from the lax enforcement of the Seven Hills Charter law. You guys don't have to do it, mayor doesn't do it. Nobody should have to do it. There are a variety of laxes that taxpayers could cite when justifying their respective discount. Let them submit a note with their payment saying that their payment is short because they took an X lax discount. Good for the end. I hope you guys are listening to anything here. This is serious. This is public trust betrayed. Thank you for listening. Thank you for letting me have the time.
Thank you. Mr. Juris? Last call. Okay. All right. Reports and communications from the Mayor and Safety Director, Mayor Delacquilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly. I noted that the council clerk read into the minutes a letter that was received in my office on Friday from a gentleman whose name is Guy Estergall. January eighteenth was the date of the postmark, although I don't think he dated the le- oh, he did date the letter. Received it on Friday, met with the chief and detectives, and did send him back a letter. I copied both to Police Department and Council, so I don't know whether it got to the council clerk or not, but since it wasn't read into the record, I'd like to read my letter back to Mr. Estergall of January the twentieth. Dear Mr. Estergall, this is in reply to your letter of January eighteen, 2017. Regarding your rental property at four-hundred Orchardview Drive, Seven Hills, Ohio, four-four-one-three-one, I have reviewed the substance of your complaints with Chief Durkin and detectives. Enclosed, please find a copy of the four-page incident reports maintained in the Police Department as a public record concerning your dispute with your former tenant at the above address. Please note that the Police Department has determined that this is a civil matter and their file has been closed without further action. I hope this adequately updates you on the status of the matter. I don't want to go into any of the detail for obvious reasons, but this is a matter that the police did spend a considerable amount of time with. I don't want to editorialize, but he was provided a response. We lost a giant in our community last week. Former mayor George Chandic was one of the most decent, honorable persons I have met in my life. Simply just watching how he struggled and tried to help as much as he could his beloved wife when she was going through what she did and how he gave up so much to make her illness as palatable as possible to the end and the sacrifices that he made was quite simply moving. He was a pillar in this community. He was never, I will never say never. There were times when he was cross. There were times when he would disagree, and I would disagree with him, and we had some lively conversations, but he was always there when you needed him, always there with a helpful word of encouragement or advice. He used to love having lunch at university, and he loved Sokolowskis. I remember many lunches there with George Chandic, and he was free with his advice, and I was equally open with my questions. Didn't matter whether you agreed with him or didn't agree with him. He was always there when you needed him. He was instrumental in so many things in the development of our city. When you take a look at the time of his service, I believe he was sworn in in December of eighty-eight, and he served for four years until whatever that would be, ninety-three. Kind of on the cusp of so many changes that have happened in our society as a whole and distilled down to Seven Hills. The development of the Internet and social media, online banking and purchases, the development of the personal computer and how much that has changed the way we do business. He was on the leading edge of making the adaptations necessary to see that Seven Hills, as much as possible, kept up with those advances. He was an innovator in a lot of ways. He's basically solely responsible for the creation of the Seven Hills Hall of Fame when he came to us several years ago with the idea of creating a Hall of Fame, not only for sports figures, but also people in literature and the arts. He, of course, as everyone knows, was a great athlete. He started out as a public school gym teacher in Tremont, his original neighborhood, before moving here to Seven Hills, dedicated to sports and the federations and making sure that our young people had avenues to express their athletic and develop their athletic talents. Eighty-seven years old. Eighty-seven years old. What a pillar of our community, what a joy to be around. And the passing of an era, what a loss for all of us. We remember him fondly. We hold him in our hearts. He will never be forgotten. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor Delacquilla. Very well said. Reports from the Directors of Departments and other officials. Director of Law, Richard Pignatello.
At the request of Council President, I have a report. Briefly. In 2015, the Law Department prepared a hundred and seventy-three pieces of legislation. In 2016, we prepared two-hundred-and-thirty-one, which is by far the most amount of legislation any city council has ever passed. An increase of almost sixty pieces of legislation from the prior year, which I believe was close to the highest ever. That's all I have.
Thank you, and I fully anticipate your next report to be a year from today. Thank you. Director of Public Services and Properties, Stuart Obie.
Yes, Mr. President. Special thanks to the three firefighters that took my mom to the hospital last Thursday from Medic Two, and they were very professional and courteous. And a thanks to our workers at the Service Garage with the leaf collection. We tallied up the cost, and there was substantial savings between this year and last year. So they really hustled, and I'm very pleased to report that. Thank you.
Thank you, Stuart. City Engineer, Dan Collins.
All I have is I'm looking forward to a busy, busy year with the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Council miscellaneous, we'll start at the end with Councilman Barth, or Biassiatah. I couldn't help it. I'm sorry, Tony.
I'm not gonna accept that call. I'm gonna call point of order.
Been waiting all meeting for that.
Pardon?
I'm sorry.
Well, we can start that discussion. Might take a couple people with me. No, let's not have that joke anymore. The name's Biassiatah. I too want to extend my sympathies to the Chandic family. I didn't know the former mayor for, believe it or not, twenty-eight years. We had a basketball rivalry. I sponsored a team. He sponsored a team. It went on for fifteen years, and he was by far one of the most competitive individuals that I went up against. So I'll miss him. He did call me several times this year to talk about things that were happening at council, give me advice, ask me to do some things, some things I was successful in, and some things I'm gonna carry out his wishes in 2017. So my sympathies to his family. He'll be missed. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Biassiatah. Councilman Bicker.
Yes, my sympathy to the former mayor's family as well. And I'd like to welcome Lisa aboard here on council. I hope you had a good time tonight.
What the heck am I getting into here? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Bicker. Councilman Krainek.
No comment.
Thank you. Councilman Kukrow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thanks to everybody who came out to the special parks meeting on Wednesday of last week. It was about an hour and a half. I think it was about fifty people here. And if you want to watch it, you can watch it on YouTube on the Seven Hills City Council channel. If you want to get involved, if you want to send me your email, I'll put you on the email list of the people who are gonna be talking about doing volunteering to do things. And thoughts and prayers to the Chandic family. I think the first time I actually met Mr. Chandic was election night, 2015, so I did not know the man, but people speak very highly of him, and thoughts and prayers to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, I too would like to welcome Lisa and my condolences to the Chandic family.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Frondor.
My condolences to the Chandic family as well. I would like to mention that last Saturday, we had the start of our budget hearings, and it was a very productive meeting. And we looked at the revenue that we anticipate to be generated in 2017. And then this coming Saturday, we have the follow-up meeting, which is the expense part of it. And the public is welcome to attend. It'll begin at nine o'clock in the Council Caucus Room on Saturday morning. I'd also like to just state one thing about the resolution. Resolution number one, 2017. And the last council meeting, I explained my reasons for supporting resolution number one. So I'm not going to go into that, but at the same time, at that meeting, I said that, you know, to put this issue behind us, that I would offer to pay the two-hundred-and-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. And I'm just publicly and formally withdrawing that because I've heard from very reliable sources that people started questioning my integrity for doing that. So I am formally withdrawing my offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I also want to welcome Lisa Plisco to the Seven Hills family. Welcome aboard. We're looking forward to working with you. My only comments tonight are in regards to former mayor George Chandic. I'm not really sure where to begin. My family has a very long history with the Chandics, and it goes back to the early eighties when my father was getting involved with the city, and he had a very close relationship with the former mayor. They were almost like brothers. And I have one story that I want to tell quickly. This was probably in nineteen eighty-eight, when he was running for mayor the first time. Back in those days, campaigns were very different. The mail, the junk mail you get from politicians was a very different process back then. Back in those days, you had to get thirty or forty people in a room, stuffed envelopes, fold the letters, put stamps on, seal them. It was a long process, but it was a lot of fun. And there's one particular instance I remember. I was probably seven years old. This was at my parents' house. And Frank, you might remember this because I'm sure you were there stuffing stuff back then with us as well. But anybody that knows my dad knows that he's very opinionated. And he was getting a little riled up, we'll say, disagreeing with George about something. And they went in our kitchen, round and round and round, and they ultimately decided, on whatever course of action they were gonna take, a few weeks later, at Dimitri's Restaurant on Snow Road, which is now closed. It was the election night party. And the results come in, and Chandic won. And I remember he, I think he got up on a chair, actually, to give a little speech. And George referenced that argument in the kitchen in front of, I don't know how many people were there. You might have been there too, Rich. And he said in particular, Jerry, if I wouldn't have listened to you, I would have lost. And he got down from that chair, and he hugged you, like he hugs so many people. And I have that vision just in the back of my head that I'll never forget. And as the years go on, I remember all these meetings and events and things with George. As he was mayor, my mom would drop me off at City Hall after school, take me to the mayor's office, and he'd stop everything he was doing. He was really into basketball. And he'd walk me into the gym as an eight- or nine, ten-year-old and teach me how to play basketball. Later, actually at the end of his term, it's another thing I'll always remember. When he was in the mayor's office, he had his collection of basketball trophies behind his desk. And Rick, I think you have that same credenza. Well, that was completely loaded with trophies. And my father and I were there on December ninth, the day before he was leaving office, packing up all his belongings in his office. I remember he gave me one of those trophies, and I need to find that. But my point is, the Treppis family and the Chandic family have a very long history. And George and my father were like brothers, and he was like a second father to me. And this is not just a big loss for our family and their family, but for the Seven Hills family. He left his mark on our city, and I'll never forget him. And I thank him for his service to the city of Seven Hills. With that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. A second motion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah?
Yes.
Frondor?
Yes.
Krainek?
Yes.
Kukrow?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Treppis?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
She laughs.
I'm sending you a letter.
No, calling Barth. I know. I know. That's my mistake for the year. No, you know, I can explain that. You know what, I just, I never changed my...
Oh, what I just said, or?
That was hilarious.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, he's very, he's very good.